LV, Wi-Fi, they'll be able to have, you know, basically direct access to our table and Internet and phone if they want to.
Is your --
On the ground.
Yeah. Is your model home still open for people that people can go in and check it out? And it's the one across from Lou's?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that picture is shown on the Riverbend Legend section, that's the one.
Okay, great. Any other questions?
And so Center Point, also a big surprise, Center Point is willing to put gas lines in the new section, and so does Spector.
Okay.
So which, you know, down the road will help everybody sell the house and resell the house and keep the values of the houses, because, you know, today, a lot of people work from home, so I mean, access to Internet and, you know, high speed is almost a must.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Coombs?
I have questions, but I'll ask them whenever.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Moving on to our third presentation, Item 2C, Park Project Update, we have Hayes Engineering and Heartland here. I know that we had, in our last meeting with Mr. Spencer, we had a lot of corrections and to make, and so we're gonna have a lot of questions for you. As far as where is the list and has the list been completed on, I know you, we talked about a punch list. So has that punch list been corrected?
I met with Sean this afternoon in reference to the punch list. We still have some fine tuning left to do, but the majority of the things that are on the list are complete. We've been out there, I went out there, I think, I know I walked out there yesterday with Councilman Johns, some of the things that we were working on, but it's not 100% complete unless the punch list was there, but we have some particular to do, but I met with him this afternoon, but the majority of them have been addressed.
Okay, I know that we have representatives from Little League and, I don't know if we have anybody from the Wildcats? Okay. Do you have any questions, because you've had an opportunity to go back and see any improvements, or do you have any, still have any issues that are going on that the council needs to know about? If you could come up to the microphone, that'd help us out. And state your name, and that helps us, for our record.
My name's, my name's Joseph Heath, I'm a board member with Little League. The fields look considerably better, I mean, I think the grass makes a difference. Some of our concerns are the scoreboard. Little League requires pitch count on the scoreboard. I didn't know if there's any plan to change that out, because the current scoreboards don't have pitch count.
Okay.
I didn't see all the bases out there, but I think, I think the one field that looked out looked like the bases were changed out. They were, they're changed out. The T-ball fields, the drainage was another main concern. I didn't do that. Everything else looked like, I mean, just with maintenance over the next couple of months could, could be a solid base built. I mean, the grade of the, of the fields still looks like a lot of it, some of it might have washed away in the back of the fields on this side. In the outfield, it just looks like it's a lower grade than, than the four part and the mountains. But that's all I noticed from just going through there today.
Okay, thank you. Can you kind of tell us what was on the punch list, because I never saw it?
I got one here.
Okay. And --
Which one do you want? Troy, tack it, do you have your punch list?
I sent it over, but I don't have it with me.
You want this to read your stuff?
It gives the bases for the different, the different lengths for bases, the temporary fencing for the field that's facing where the hogs were coming in, for 220, I think it's 225, is what we built, temporary fencing for the T-ball fields on the outside. Bat racks, helmet racks, and then a couple of little small, those little things. But, I mean, the fields are coming along, and I know there's questions about work being done. Mr. Johns has expressed with cracking in the rock and different things like that. Also, I believe we brought up some more shade where they had the actual scorekeepers, official scorekeepers, who kept right behind the home plate, and all they had is a vent right now. There was, the way I understood it, there was gonna be a shade there for them as well, the scorekeepers, official scorekeepers.
And we, and we talked about that.
Excuse me, did you give a punch list, who did you give a punch list?
I sent one to Henrietta and I sent one to Sean.
He sent a punch list to me, and we've been working it into Sean.
Okay, so not all of us got one?
No, because --
Mr. Neeson has one?
Well, I didn't send it to Mr. Neeson.
Who sent it to you?
Who sent this to me?
Yes.
I think I was at a meeting when they were passing them out.
Did you pass them out at a meeting?
I didn't pass them out.
Well, I can make sure that we get everyone a copy of the punch list.
Yeah, give us a punch list.
I know there's several punch lists around, I know Ben, I was out there one day with FEDC, Ben Reed is representative there, and they were going over some of the stuff. And, and that's one thing I'd like to bring up now is, is also, I don't know if anybody was out there for that Saturday deal, and there was compliments, some disagreements about the stickers and not the field being maintained and all those kind of things, the dirt not being ready to play. But, I mean, the dirt was cleared, but it was soft, it was, wasn't really viable to play yet. The stickers were really bad, we need to start maintaining those fields. I know Henrietta's in charge of that, I would, it's true that somebody needs to be out there trying to get rid of those stickers. A lot of the guys were playing, and when they dove, came up.
We were trying to do that, but some of the council didn't want, none of the parks guys working on it.
Yeah, so those are a couple of little things.
We're working on that, we'll work on that during budget time.
Just little things like that are the main deals that Little League's looking at, like I said, and we go back out there and go over some of that stuff, but I know a lot of the stuff's already been talked to with Sean, and was put on the punch list at one time, and some of the stuff was already told me it was already getting done, and that just hasn't got done yet. But it was already done, not on the exact punch list that you might have still. I think most of that was the bases and a couple of little things, right?
And then Ben Reed's one, he had check defenses cover for scorekeeper, which he said to Chris Grant.
But the cover for the scorekeeper --
Oh, so that came from Ben Reed.
The cover for the scorekeeper wasn't --
This one was from, I don't know.
So a lot of the things were duplicated, and I did receive the one from EDC from Ben Reed. We've gone through them. I think, like I said, we have, the majority of them have taken care of, there's still a few things from the list, the football gave one as well, and Sean has had a comprehensive list, so we've gone through them. And what I can provide to the council is the original list that we had, I didn't know that you all wanted the punch list, but we can do that and provide them to everyone.
Don't be very --
And then what we'll do is that we'll indicate what's left to do, but on, from your list, the baseball, the football list, and Ben Reed provided list, some of them are duplicates. But again, on the, we had the one, I think they talked about that, about the scorekeeper, and I don't do football, baseball, but the, the strike thing or whatever, that we'd have to look to see, because that was not one of the original things that they had on their list. The same thing for the shedding, for the cover, but we're hoping that in Phase Two we can see about putting that cover on there since they're doing that. So I can give you a list, and what I'll do is give you the list and then highlight the ones that are complete. I'll send an email to you as well, because I have it electronically, and then we can make sure that it's all done for the punch list. But it's again, about 85 to 90% of it's done, and probably the rest of it will be done in a couple of days.
Could I get Sean to, I'm sorry, hold on one second, then I'll let you, could I get Sean and, and the engineer to come up to the podium right now? Okay. Councilman Jimenez, as you're going up there.
I just wanted to say that --
Councilman, you doing the record with my phone?
I said, I've had a lot, a lot of people tell me to compliment the park, that it really looks amazing, that they weren't, that they didn't know that we had something like this behind this event center, that it was really, really nice, and that, I believe that once we tweak out everything, you know, everything's gonna be, we're gonna have a spectacular fields, fields back there for all our kids, our grandkids and our family members and stuff. I know a lot of our family members here in the city, small city of Florisville, they get really involved with their, with their kids, you know, and I'm glad that we, that we have something like this.
One of the, they did tell me, I don't play baseball, they said, I think it was Larry Leckie, they said, the more you play on it and pound on it, the dirt will be less powdery, I think that's the word he used, but it comes, they have, it has to be played on, that's what he said.
Everybody knows that.
Okay.
Anybody that's in sports, they know that.
Okay, Mr. --
Even with the stickers.
After you fill it up, that was the bad thing, they did it right before they played, and then there was no rain right before they played that turn.
And even with the stickers, everybody knows here in Wilson County that you've gotta maintain them 24/7.
Okay, this is going towards Mr. Spencer and Mr. Stevens? Stevens? Since our last meeting, it was a month ago, you had said you take care of a lot of things. What have you done in this last month? What's your list that you, that you know has been corrected?
The vast majority of the list, I mean, you know, the, the big things that we talked about in our last meeting, the stonework was probably one of the biggest things that we talked about, that's been torn down and rebuilt since our last meeting. A myriad of punch list items, and what I can do, listening to y'all talk about the punch list, what I can do, I have everybody's punch list, I think I've got like, probably four different punch lists over the point. What I can do is I can provide you guys, like tomorrow in an email form, the list of what's left of all the punch lists, so basically the to finish list, which is, which is basically updated this afternoon, and we walked through, and there's just a handful of little minor things left to do.
Well, I also wanted to clear up is that, and I am, I haven't forgotten about you, I also wanted to clear up is that each time that there was a check to sign, somebody had approved it and was, came through Hayes Engineering, did you come down and check what had been done before the, the purchase order or the invoice came through and --
Ma'am, we reviewed pictures that were provided by Harlan Parks and Rec of the work that had been done. So what they would do, whenever they would have the list of items that they had worked on, they would actually take pictures of those major list items that were on the invoice of the work that had been done from the last major request.
So how many times have you actually been in this process? How many times have you actually been to Florisville?
Actually during construction, either two or three times, yes ma'am. I was here two times during design, and I think I've been here twice during construction.
Okay.
And this is the third time now.
Okay. And if you'll stay right there. Councilwoman Kent, too?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify, the reason I was asking Mr. Neeson where he got his punch list, it was because I had one too, and I thought, you know, that they had combined them all together. Like you said, everybody called you.
I've combined them together on my internally, that I've been working off of and deleting them as they get off, and so it's truly easy for me to provide the littleness that's left.
And I thank you, because you did what I wanted, my punch list, okay?
You got the punch list for, somebody, I always got this.
Would you say that the concession stand is 100% complete?
Uh, no, the, there's, I need to replace the door on the concession stand, that was, one of the door apparatuses on the backside weren't operating right, and so I had the punch list crew look at it to see if it could be repaired, if it was a faulty, faulty push or what it was, and when they went back, they said that to, to repair it would leave exposed holes, so I'm gonna order another one to be delivered out there.
Is that the only thing that you feel needs to be corrected in that concession stand?
Uh, you know, I'd have to look at the punch list itself to, to see specifics, but --
And I'm going back to the meeting that we had a month ago where you said this would all be taken care of within a few weeks. Now it's a month later. I went through the concession stand, there's holes in the, in the ceiling of the men's and the ladies' room where the vent goes, the, the locks are on the outside of the concession stands, which you usually don't, do not do. The brick had holes in it where dirt was coming out, the, the new mortar per se, so I wouldn't say that it's 100%.
Uh, the, the, the roof is sealed from the top with caulk around the top where the plumbing vents go out, so I can get a guy up there and to verify again, to make sure that it's been sealed from the top.
Yeah, as of today, it hadn't been, so another rain and the, the restrooms will be full of water again.
Okay. Well, I'll make sure that we get that addressed. It was reported to me it's complete, so we'll, we'll make sure that that's done.
Excuse me, ma'am, but I had sent, now that it rained, I had sent one of the guys to go check it, because I couldn't get over here, because I checked it that first time when it was full of water.
Yes, ma'am.
And then they told me there was no water in there, so --
Yeah, I believe it's sealed from the top side, but I'll, I'll verify that, just to make sure.
Yes, because the sun was coming through it today.
Okay.
So, Councilman Jimenez?
I know that, last time that he was here, you know, we, we addressed a lot of the things that needed to be done, but it's not just one punch list from, from my understanding, got one, two, three, four, five punch lists, so there's a lot of extra things that are coming into play. But, like I said prior at the last meeting, a contractor that does, refuses to fix anything or anything that needed to be fixed is a bad contractor. A contractor that's trying to fix and work with everybody to get everything tweaked out, I think that's, therefore we need to be, we just need to move on and get the things needed to be fixed. We got guys playing on the fields already, and they're gonna know, hey, what, what needs to be done or whatever. They found out the areas that, that the drainage issues were at, hey, the engineer said, well, you know what, let's reroute the water this other way, he's willing to fix that, so we're getting there.
I agree, I agree that it's a contractor can do it.
Yes.
But I'm also reminding you that on various occasions, you have promised that the project would be finished, it never met those deadlines. A month ago, you said it'd take a couple of weeks for you to get the punch list taken care of.
What we said.
Hold on, hold on. And yet, it's a month later, and there's still a lot of work to do. I know the majority of the council has faith in you and your company, but I'm not so sure.
I disagree that there's a lot left to do.
Now, if you can make us happy, and we have a, we have a park, there is no doubt about that, we have a park.
Yeah, beautiful park.
We do have a park, and so I just wanna make sure that, as this council says, that the community's money is being spent in the best possible way.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, if you were building my house and I saw the mortar and I saw the situations over there, I wouldn't be happy with you either.
Sure.
So, and I'll give the floor to the council at this point for their comments.
Can I, can I respond back to what you asked?
Yes.
Okay, and, and I agree, it's the citizens' money, the park is coming along, there's, there's a little bit of work left to be done, like what Troy was talking about, the, the clay as you play it in. In, in my opinion, the best thing in, that happened to this project and the completion of this project was the approval for the Phase Two, because I'm here, and everything you build, like you say, if somebody builds you a house, there's, I know there's contractors in the room that do that stuff, there's, there's a breaking in process, there's a, you move in, you put your stuff, you use the plumbing, you use all the stuff, there's little things that, that come up periodically. I'm, I'm really glad that, that I'm gonna be here through the breaking in process, and so when something breaks in and it doesn't break in right, we're here immediately to respond to it. So, there's not much left to finish the punch list, I'll provide it to Ms. Turner, she can provide it to you guys, there's maybe three or four pretty small items left on it, so we're, we're happy to report that.
And from the engineering standpoint, you have corrections or revisions to make on the drainage in the back?
The one thing I'm aware of, this drainage in the T-ball area, on the master grading plan for the entire site, that area wasn't graded, we graded to where the, there's a small ditch or swell that's just outside of the, the outfield fence that brings the water around to the, let me get my directions right, to the west and south. And then the, when Harlan went out there to put in the backstops, they did do some grading right around the backstops, just to make that flatter and more playable for T-ball. We did today, when we came down here, we brought our GPS out here, we did shoot in that entire area to see what's actually going on. It looks like there's just a small knoll or hill or whatever you wanna call it, a terrace, just between that ditch and the T-ball fields that may be holding that water, but I don't know that for sure until I get the data from my GPS in and we take a look at it and see what we need to do to fix it. The things we talked about was, on a couple of the smaller depression areas, bringing in a little bit of dirt, raise those up, that way the water doesn't hold and reseed those areas, but overall, you still have the problem with water that may be ponding. Either that may be addressed by either some minor grading modifications to get that water on out and get it to drain on out, or put in some sort of a small area drain and pipe it on out, if we can't get it to grade just with natural sheet flow off of that area.
Any other questions by the council or comments? Councilman Johnson?
I'd like to make a few comments. The drainage out there is terrible, not just at the, the T-ball field, the concrete for the walkways is already cracking up, coming apart. I would really like to walk out there with you, I took Ms. Turner yesterday, could you maybe enlighten them on some of the things I pointed out?
Oh, no sir, I'm quite sure you can express it.
Well, I know you took three pages of notes on it.
I took, no, I'm quite sure you can express the wonderful information.
Okay, I'll, your drainage, well, starting off, I had two engineers come out with me and look at the water drainage and how the dirt, the dirt work was done. To me, I'm just a mechanic, that's why I got two other engineers to come with me. And as they say, if the dirt work's not done right, nothing else is gonna be done right, done right. The concession stand, where you, the water comes down from the north, coming down towards the concession stand, I was always kind of puzzled, because I've been out there more times than y'all have, how dirt gets underneath the, underneath the doors into the concession stand. Well, after this light little rain we had last time, well, the water runs downhill into the concession stand. Water stands on the concrete and actually goes into the concession stand. I don't know how you're gonna fix that, but there's a big pool of water that sits there also. There's no way for the water to drain around the concession stand, because it's, it's in, in the ground deeper than what water's coming past it. If you go walk out there now, you can see where water's going over the sidewalks, which some of the dirt's lost around them. You can tell the concrete's about, on the sidewalks is only about two inches thick, they're already cracking up, falling apart. You can see where a lot of, either they were tore up and then put back in, the concrete was done pretty badly, where they put a slurry on top of the concrete to kind of, kind of hide bad, bad workmanship. By the T-ball field where water's coming down it, did y'all look at that one drainage pipe where you got a culvert with concrete there where, I can't see how y'all could miss that, if y'all would have walked the park with, with me. Water that goes around the other baseball fields, you have a drainage up here, but you got a pool down here, you know, if the water grazes maybe 12, 14 inches, it maybe will hit the drain, where water starts draining towards your last football field, or your last baseball field.
I wanna know what, where we get 12, 14 inches of rain?
No, no, I'm saying water has to raise 14 inches before it goes into the drain.
Where, where, what location is that at?
I can take you out there and show you and have some answers from, from you. I've asked for the, for the engineering of that field, you know, to shoot our own grades on it, but water, you can tell with the light rain we had in the last, you know, 10 days or whatever, you have a drain up here, water runs around.
Well, I can tell you on one of the drains, one of the, and I, and I actually talked to Sean about that today when we were walking the side, it's in the roughly right center field, I don't know which field that is, the one closest to the large, to the, to the drain. Yeah, facing back this direction. We called for junction box, they put in a great inlet. It, it doesn't matter, it needed to be a junction bo, or a junction box, if it has a great top, that's fine. There was no intention of water ever getting into that box, it was to turn the drainage back towards the south. Because we have the drainage coming around from the, the sidewalk that's coming from the north parking, we had to turn that around, you just can't bend the pipe. So there's a deflection there in that box.
There's a big pool of water that's there, you know, almost a pond when it rains, you know, I don't know, y'all never have seen it after a rain. And I'm not talking big rain, I'm talking one inch or a drizzle, maybe an inch, you know, not really a downpour, but that place is nothing but ponds and pools. You can, you can walk it and just see it, and you just, all it's gonna do is get worse. And actually, anytime it rains, the sidewalk, the big, the big walkway going over to, to the concession stand, it gets covered in dirt, you know, it's, it's, if it comes off the baseball fields, not to any type of drainage all have done, it, it covers the, the sidewalks, you know, and it's, you know, you know, the ra, the sidewalk could have been raised or drainage underneath it, it's, it's, it's gonna be a continuous mess, continuous work.
To speak to the drainage, to give you a, a, the thought process behind how these quads are built, you have two ways of doing it, you can surface drain it or you can put a drainage underground. Drainage underground is rather expensive. So a lot of times on these projects, you try to use the center sidewalks that are between the fields, you grade towards the sidewalks and try to use that concrete, because if it's coming a large storm, people aren't really playing baseball anyways. In, in regards to getting dirt on the, on the sidewalks, until we get a good standard grass in those areas where we've done the utility improvements.
The sidewalks are already under dirt.
No, I'm not, I'm not.
With that, you still have, where you do have underground drainage, that's what I'm talking about, your, your drain is up here, and your, where the water's running past the drain, it doesn't get near the drain, it runs around the sides of it. You know, it's, it's just really, really upsetting. And then you even watch, watch where water, water's coming from the concession stand, coming down, down, down to one side.
Any vault?
I'd like to walk it with you and have you explain to me how this works, but when you have a concession stand that's supposed to be the high point where water's running through it, don't you think there's a problem with that? And plus the construction of the building, I'd like to just show y'all.
As the, as the mayor, I would, I would ask, if it's at all possible, for any council members and yourselves to walk out there at the most, the most convenient time.
If you guys can --
How about after this meeting, right now?
I don't know how long, I don't, I haven't looked at it.
Well, I'd really like to show you, because I'm having to talk third person all the time, I took Henrietta out there.
Okay, Councilman Jimenez?
I mean, the council, there's several people want to speak, and he brought something that was already addressed.
It's that much of a problem?
I would like to answer, please.
He's talking to their --
Well, I understand, but it was here.
I, I know that, and we've had your opportunity to speak as well.
Go ahead.
So I'm asking that any, if any council members wanna go and go back to the park?
I'm asking, I wanna ask a question.
I'm, I'm giving you the opportunity, but I'm going back to what I just said, is that after the meeting, any council members who would like to go back with Mr. Spencer and Mr. Stevens are more than welcome to. Now it's time for your question, Mr. --
Hey, you need to be careful in reference to, I'm sorry, in reference to a quorum, if you're going to do that, you can't adjoint your meeting, because if you have a quorum, talking city business is still a meeting.
Okay.
Okay, I just wanted to address what he was talking about. Okay, for one thing, concrete, anybody that knows anything about concrete, hairline cracks is a norm. Now, if the concrete is cracked in half, we've got a problem, but hairline cracks, that's a norm. I don't care where you pour concrete, anywhere in the United States, that's a norm. Am I correct?
You are correct, I mean, concrete is not a matter of if it cracks, it's when it will crack.
Okay, that's one, I just wanted to clarify that. Another thing, Mr. Spencer already had addressed about the building that you're talking about, about putting some of that pea gravel, kind of making it a French drain type, with, with some pipes going underneath the, the concrete? That's what you had addressed?
That's whenever you, if, when you got second phase.
Correct, yeah.
Am I correct or not?
No, you're correct, and that's an option, and if we're, if we're continually holding water around that concession stand, that's something that Mr. Stevens can, can sketch up and give us a fix to get it out of.
Okay, I mean, you had brought that up.
Yes.
Whenever, if, if you got second phase or whatever, he had said that he was gonna pull off some pea gravel or something that was --
We're pulling pea gravel out of the old playgrounds at Lance Field Park, so we have --
And, and that should address what you're talking about, Mr. Johnson? Okay, well, I'm not a --
We will not fix that problem.
What's that?
We won't fix that problem.
What, what are you suggesting, that they move the whole building off?
No, it's, it starts uphill where the water's coming from.
I understand that, but that, do you know what a French drain is?
Yes, I do, Gerard.
Okay, well, that's what, that's what he was talking about, so.
Okay, going, moving on.
Madam.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I say something, I mean, we have to take everybody here under consideration, ma'am. And, and I understand, my colleague, you know, he, he, he has some good points, and over here on my left too, and, and, and on my right, let's get those, those, those mistakes corrected and, and let's move on. We're spending really too much time on this, let's get a good, a good, what do you call that, check?
Punch list?
Punch list, let's get a good punch list and give it to each council members, not, not just one here and one over there. Let's do so.
I never have that.
I have the floor, Senator Johnson, thank you, I never interrupted you, and we must move on, we, we, we have a lot of other issues, fees, you know, for our, our, our teams, you know, our lights, you know, what are we gonna do about that, you know, many, many issues, but, and, and yes, we do have some, some bumps and bruises on the way, that's, it's getting corrected, and, and it's not-
And move on.
Have a big, oh, pardon, exactly, let's move on and, and treat everybody with, with respect there, and it's, let's just get it done and let's move on, I mean, you know, the, the city out there's looking at us, and it's not looking good, it's not looking good over here and not across, so let's, let's do our jobs, and, and, and I urge y'all, you know, to get those, those punch lists corrected, and let's move on, and let's not give a date, if you give a date, sir, with all due respect, you know, it's best to say probably around there or, or something, but don't give a date and then it's not done, but I mean, you know, let's, it's good or done, and let's, let's move on. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Now, in closing, I'll leave it open to any of the Little League or the Wildcats, if they have any other concerns before we close this session of our-